Before we proceed, we will open proceedings as an opening prayer. Joshua, would you please let's all stand up together? I will say my prayers in Inuktitut. I think we should pay respect to our late Queen Her Majesty Elizabeth. She deserves a lot of respect. Please let them serve a moment of silence.
Thank you. Joshua?
Thank you, Joshua. Our. I would like to welcome the Mayor of the Community Assistant Mayor Derek.
Derek Elias.
Hello. Good morning. Can you hear me? I guess. Good morning, everybody. Ub Lakhut. Good morning, Cambridge Bay residents, NPC board members, and our visiting guests and delegates. On behalf of the Hamlet Council Administration and community residents, it is my pleasure to welcome you all to Iqaluitutiaq for the Ktikmitut Public Hearings to discuss and draft Nunavut Land Use Plan. In consultation with the government of Nunavut, federal government, Inuit organizations, municipalities, and other organizations, the Nunavut Planning Commission is responsible for the development, implementation, and monitoring of land use plans in Nunavut. The municipality of Cambridge Bay is very pleased to host these regional public hearings and to participate in these discussions. We look forward to working with all of the stakeholders here today and identify issues and opportunities to enhance the lives of our residents and businesses in Iqaluitutiaq and across the region. This type of collaboration will help ensure that all Nunavut Miut are informed and are able to participate in the planning process. Once again, welcome to Iqaluitutiaq. Thank you for taking the time to join these public hearings and for participating in these discussions. And on a side note, I'd like to welcome home Sharon Akhaklaq and her son Jonathan. Welcome home back to Cambridge Bay. And thank you very much. And hopefully you guys enjoy your meetings. Qana.
Thank you. Tano tao ikumaseenio seyur Mary.
And we will now proceed with kullek.
Kulamit ikumaseetilou.
It's Mary Kauteluk, as she likes to call it. Many years ago, I was taught how to light this kullek. It was life's essential saving device. When I moved here. And I was taught how to light it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary, for the presentation. Before we proceed.
Sharon has some housekeeping.
Sharon?
Sharon. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everyone. It is wonderful to be back in my home community. I lived here for 34 years before relocating to Iqaluitutiaq with opening the NPC office in Iqaluitutiaq. And it's been just wonderful to see family and friends from all over the region and to be home. First of all, the meeting times on the agenda, I would like to review. We're going to switch them slightly. Instead of stopping at 12 noon, we're going to stop at 11:45 and start at 9:00 a.m., sorry, in the morning. And then in the afternoons, we're going to start at 1:15 to 4:30. And the evening sessions, as required, will go from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And I remind all presenters that as you're coming up, we are translating and using translators. So please, as you speak, try to speak slowly so they can keep up. While you're in the hall, if you could please put your phones on silent so it's not distracting the presenters or the proceedings. These proceedings are being recorded as well as transcribed. They're being broadcast live on UvaGut TV, Channel 240, 267, and on the link on their website and the commission website nunavut.ca. We also are broadcasting on our YouTube link live through our website. You can find that and our Facebook page. We will be taking two 15-minute breaks, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, as close to 10:30 and 2:15 as possible. When you're coming in, everyone was given one of these. The Chief Medical Health Office, although we're not in COVID, has asked us to please keep track of all participants at the proceedings. So on the back, you have a scan code as you come in in the morning and you leave in the morning and come in in the afternoon and leave in the evening. If you could just walk by and scan. And for the community delegates, this is really important for you as well for our purposes, for your meal per diem, etc. So if you can please try to remember, and the team at the table will also remind you as you're going out. And please do not take these out of the hall. Please leave them in in the facility. We have many delegates that will be presenting today and throughout the week. We would ask that everyone please be respectful while they're speaking. There will be an opportunity at the end of the participants' presentation to ask questions. When you speak, as we are recording these and the sessions are being transcribed, every time you speak, please state your name, your organization, or for our community members, your community, and who you're representing. Chairperson Nakashuk is chairing these proceedings, and he will recognize all speakers. And we ask that only one person speak at a time. And again, we are translating, so speak slow. We will be sticking to our agenda. And I'll be reviewing that momentarily. We have over coffee, tea, water, snacks, so help yourself. The washrooms are located as you come in the facility. There's three emergency exits. The one everyone came in, one at the rear, and one at the front of the hall. If there should be an emergency, please exit through the exit closest to you. We are on the other side of COVID, we hope. And there is not a requirement to wear masks, but please, whatever your comfort is, we have masks provided, so it's at your discretion. If you're not feeling well, we ask that you do not attend the proceedings. If you're a community member and you become ill, please notify Naudlak, and we will follow up with you. If you have any questions, we have support staff and a team at the front table to assist with any clarifications or questions that you might have in relation to the proceedings. I'm going to turn it back over to Chairperson Nakashuk for the introduction of commission members. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Sharon. At this time, we are going to have an introduction of commissioners. Thank you, Chair. Appointed Nunavut Planning Commission Commissioner, Daryl Okena. Happy to be sitting here in my home community.
Good morning, everybody. Dorothy Gibbons, Commissioner.
Sean Lester, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair Patricia. Commissioner. Joshua Alya, Commissioner, NPC. Abraham Keenayna, Commissioner. Thank you. Introductions. My name is Andrew Nakashuk, Chair of the Nunavut Planning Commission from Panketok.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning again. My name is Sharon Akhaklaq. I'm the Executive Director with the Nunavut Planning Commission. I will first introduce the commission team. And I would ask the staff and our support staff to stand as I call your name to be recognized. Brian Agluukak. Brian is our Director of Community Engagement and Translations based in our RVAT office. Jonathan Akhaklaq. Jonathan is our Assistant Executive Director and Manager of Information Technology based out of the Iqaluitutiaq office. Jonathan Savoy. Jonathan is our Director of Policy and Planning based out of our Cambridge Bay office. Gump Jelong. Gump is our Manager of Planning and Implementation out of our Iqaluitutiaq office. Solomon Aminow. Solomon is our Senior Planner based out of our Cambridge Bay office. Adrian Gerhartz. Adrian is our Planner, GIS Technician Extraordinaire. He's the one responsible for all the maps that you see, and he's based in our Iqaluitutiaq office. Tommy Alajut. Think everybody probably knows Tommy. Tommy is our Interpreter-Translator and is back in the translation booth. Annie Ole. Annie Ole is... There's Annie. Annie is our Interpreter-Translator, Mapper. And Tommy and Annie are both based out of our RVAT office. Naudlak Kelly. Naudlak is our Executive Assistant to all the Directors and Managers as well as our Office Manager for all three of the commission offices. And Naudlak is based out of the Iqaluitutiaq office. David Livingstone. David Livingstone is an External Advisor to the Commission, and he has been working in land use planning in the NWT in Nunavut for, I'll say, 40 years, but I think it's closer to 50. And he provides us external guidance. Alan Blair. Alan Blair is our Legal Counsel. Jas Aikens is our Stenographer and is transcribing the proceedings. Henry Okunawak. Where are you, Henry? Oh, there's a hand. Henry and James Panuiak are our translators. Hi, James. I'd like to recognize our local support team. Bessie Joy. Annie Jane Kamingawak. Rosie Kayagana. Joan McCollum. And Kalik Komak. And if you need anything, that's our dream team over there to help provide support. I'd like to recognize our Communications and Media Advisor, Beth Gorm. And on the cameras, Willie Persalt. And Chris Hig... I hope I say your name right, Chris. Heilich? Chris Heilich over in the corner. I would like to now recognize and introduce the participants. If you could please stand as I call your organization to be recognized. First of all, the Government of Canada. If you can all stand, please. The Government of Nunavut. Nunavut Tungavik. And I would especially like to recognize James Utaluk, First Vice President. Very pleased to have you here today. The Ktikmitut Inuit Association. The Ktikmitut Regional Wildlife Board. The Hamlet of Cambridge Bay. Woo-hoo! Iqaluitutiaq Hunters and Trappers Organization. The Hamlet of Joe Haven. Joe Haven Hunters and Trappers. The Hamlet of Koglok Tok. Koglok Tok Hunters and Trappers. The Hamlet of Kugaruk. Kugaruk Hunters and Trappers. Woo-hoo! The Hamlet of Teloewak. Spence Bay Hunters and Trappers. The Nunavut Impact Review Board. The Nunavut Water Board. The Nunavut Marine Council. Heather's wearing two hats today. Amaco Eagle. Sabina Gold and Silver Corp. Glencore. The Chamber of Mines. MMG. The World Wildlife Fund. And Friends of Land Use Planning. So before we start our proceedings, I would just like to review the agenda. Everyone has a copy of the agenda. You can see from the agenda that we have a very full schedule. And as we go through today, the commission will be providing an overview of the land use plan, the history and the structure of the proceedings. And we will be having a question-and-answer period for clarifications on the proceedings and the plan. For tomorrow, we will start our opening remarks. And we will have the presentations first from the signatory parties, the Government of Canada, Nunavut Tungavik, and the Government of Nunavut. These parties will have 60 minutes for their presentation. And then there will be a 30-minute period for question-and-answers. And again, we ask that everyone be respectful of the presenters and ask the questions at the end of the presentations. For the community members, each hamlet and HTO will have 30 minutes to present. And it's up to them if they want to present separately or together. And then 30 minutes for each of the question-and-answers. So if they're presenting separately, 30 minutes each, 30 minutes each. If they're presenting, an hour, and then the hour for questions. The order that we are doing the presentations tomorrow after the signatory parties will be the Hamlet of Cambridge Bay, Iqaluitutiaq Hunters and Trappers, the Hamlet of Joe Haven, Joe Haven Hunters and Trappers, the Hamlet of Koglok Tok, Koglok Tok Hunters and Trappers, the Hamlet of Kugaruk, Kugaruk Hunters and Trappers. Then presentations by members of the public who have advised the commission they want to present. And then question-and-answers, oral comments, and the close of the day. For Day Three, presentations by the registered participants continue. First will be the Hamlet of Teloewak, Spence Bay Hunters and Trappers, the Ktikmitut Regional Wildlife Board, the Ktikmitut Inuit Association. And I have Nunavut Tungavik, Government of Canada and Government of Nunavut. And then question-and-answers, oral comments, and closing day. So I think I got the order mixed up. So it'll be the community participants first and then the signatory parties second. Apologies, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, Day Four, we will continue with our registered participants' presentations. The Nunavut Impact Review Board, the Nunavut Water Board, the Nunavut Marine Council, Amaco Eagle, Sabina Gold and Silver Corp, Glencore, the World Wildlife Fund, and any other presenters who have advised the commission in advance that they wish to present. Then we will have the final closing statements. Three minutes from each of the community members and 15 minutes from the signatory parties. Then the closing remarks by the commission and the closing prayer. With that, Mr. Chair, I will turn it back over to you. And thank you very much. Again, please silence your phones if you haven't done so already. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Another reminder. To delegates, when you have the mic, make sure you state your name for the record of the proceedings. It's a reminder before we proceed too long. We are going to present a short video before we proceed into the hearing.
This land is home to 25 communities and incredible wildlife resources, including essential habitat for caribou, polar bears, fish, and marine mammals. Nunavut also hosts abundant mineral resources that can provide many benefits if they are developed responsibly. This fall, an historic land use consultation process led by the Nunavut Planning Commission is coming to a close. Final public hearings on the draft Nunavut Land Use Plan will be held in several northern communities in September, October, and November. In 2023, a recommended land use plan will be submitted for approval to the Government of Canada, the Government of Nunavut, and Nunavut Tungavik Incorporated. The result will be the largest land use plan of its kind in the world. It will fulfill the vision of Inuit self-reliance outlined in the 1993 Nunavut Agreement, which is constitutionally protected. And it is a major step in furthering national reconciliation with indigenous peoples, a process that is vital to the future of Canada. This is a comprehensive, balanced roadmap that supports the Inuit way of life and bolsters food security while creating sustainable economic opportunities that will increase the health and prosperity of communities. This plan recognizes the challenges of climate change and the need to conserve land and waters. A protected, clean environment is important for all Canadians and the rest of the world. This plan also recognizes the enormous contribution that responsible resource development could make to the Canadian economy and a world grappling with resource shortages. The implications are far-reaching for Nunavut, Inuit, Canadians, and the world as we face critical environmental and economic challenges together to sustain future generations. To find out more, please go to the Nunavut Planning Commission website at www.nunavut.ca.
Thank you.
I would like to say to you
First, I want to touch on the larger context of the relevant of the land use planning in Nunavut. Land use planning is about understanding the integral environmental, economic, and social-cultural context within which a plan is to be developed. The possible alternatives for land uses, and the selection of the best option in circumstances given the best information we have at the time. Across the north and across Canada, land use planning processes have experienced many different challenges. Those challenges are often due to diverse interests and the range of the environmental, economic, and social conditions. Our experience in Nunavut can be given more challenging than other planning processes because of the size of Nunavut, the varied interests, often from the region to region, as well as within regions. We often have different views on an overall vision for land use planning in Nunavut and the scope and the content of the First Generation Plan. As well as disagreement over the necessary resources for planning and how hearings should be conducted. We also address the unprecedented size of our planning area, which further increases the number and complexity of the issues. No other jurisdiction in the world has attempted this at such a scale. Regardless of the challenges identified, land use planning is essential. It matters to Nunavut, to our communities, to government, various organizations, and industries. It matters to the land and all those that rely on the land, all living things, and it matters to all of us. Collectively, as we seek to protect the environment and develop resources responsibly and sustainably in the short term and for our future generations. In Article 11 of Nunavut Agreement, set out the principles that guide land use planning in Nunavut. And I'll quote some key sections. "The primary purpose of land use planning in Nunavut settlement area shall be to protect and promote the existing and future well-being of all those persons ordinarily resident and communities of Nunavut settlement area, taking into account the interest of all Canadians. Special attention shall be devoted to protecting and promoting the existing and future well-being of Inuit and Inuit own land. The planning process shall ensure land use plans reflect the priorities and values of the residents of the planning regions. And the objective of the planning process shall be to prepare land use plan which guide and direct resource use and development in Nunavut settlement area." Land use planning is much more than drawing lines on a map. It is about setting and achieving goals, identifying and living within limits of acceptable economic, environmental, and social change. We must ensure the future is more than the result of a series of decisions about individual projects and activities. This plan, your plan, provides an opportunity through an inclusive process to meaningfully address and have essential conversation about difficult things. There are several reasons why a supported and approved Nunavut Land Use Plan matters. It will support decision-making with respect to environmental stewardship, sustainable resource, and economic opportunities and social benefit. It will serve as a filter and an entry point into the Nunavut regulatory system. And by doing so, avoid single project-by-project reviews in the absence of the regional context. It will provide structure and process to identify what is important and confirming why it's important. A larger sense, not just a single proposed project. It will set out a framework for the public and private investment, resource and environmental management, and progress of Nunavut mute defined. Planning needs to be understood as a continual process that has to be monitored and reconsidered over time as circumstances need and opportunity change and when new information becomes available. There is no magic formula for creating a land use plan. It is always a question of achieving an acceptable balance among differing views. Values and vision, understanding, and knowing comes in different forms. Both Inuit kawayimitukangit and Western science acknowledge the importance of experience, wise judgment, and intuition. Compromised by all parties is essential. No one party will get everything it wants, but all parties should achieve enough to be satisfied with the outcome. Compromised by all parties is essential. No one party will get everything it wants, but all parties should achieve enough to be satisfied with the outcome. The planning process is both a challenge and an opportunity. We are challenged to see and understand the different views, values, and priorities from all perspectives. This gives us the opportunity to see things through others' perspective, to build a bridge and reach a consensus, to find some balance, and to adapt and approve the plan over time as circumstances and new information becomes available. The Nunavut Planning Commission's decision-making framework presented in the draft 2021 Plan and the Option and Recommendation Document, the disciplined and transparent process is framed by considering option and trade-offs. Final decision-making relies on the combination of information, values, experience, and professional judgment. The Nunavut Land Use Plan will be living document. The 2021 draft plan incorporate ongoing monitoring and periodic reviews. An amendment of the plan, a continued commitment to achieve and maintain balance. The plan will be adapted to meet changing circumstances and events, including community population changes, wildlife population habitat changes, mineral and hydrocarbon demand and supplies, and impact of climate change on the land and its use. We commissioners are committed to making all effort to ensure that balanced decision-making remain at the core of our decision. We will continue to rely on the best available information in Inuit kawayimitukangit and Western science. For those analysts of fact and consideration of values, the last 15 years of the plan development have consumed resources and placed demand on communities, regional organizations, and other planning partners. Now it is time for our collective effort to come together and complete the Nunavut Land Use Plan. It is important for us to see issues from each other's perspective to understand and commit to the compromise necessary. Working together, we have finalized a plan for Nunavut that reflects the priorities, values, and vision of Nunavut and our communities.
Thank you for your attention.
15 minutes?
I think we'll take 15-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention. Our cameraman.
Where you are.
Let's proceed. I'm handing it back to Sharon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sharon Halawak with the Nunavut Planning Commission, Executive Director. At this time, we're going to be turning it over to Jonathan Savoy with the Planning Commission to do a present with the Planning Commission to do a presentation of the 2021 Draft Nunavut Land Use Plan and a review of the maps. And just before we start, if I could ask the community delegates when we break for lunch, if you could just stay behind, we do want to talk to you at lunch break. So everyone around the table, if you could stay after John's presentation, he'd probably go to lunch and then into this afternoon. So just if you can stay back. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Jonathan Savoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome everyone to my home community of Cambridge Bay. It's wonderful to see everyone here and to be starting this really exciting hearing process here in town. This morning, I'll be providing an overview of the 2021 Draft Nunavut Land Use Plan, just highlighting some of the key concepts that are proposed in the draft plan that we'll all be discussing throughout the week, as well as highlighting some of the key issues, in particular here in the Ktikmit region, as well as noting some of the areas where there is currently a lack of consensus in the written submissions that have been received to date on the current draft plan. Very briefly, I'm sure we're all aware, the Nunavut Planning Commission is an institution of public government established in 1993 under the Nunavut Agreement. The Commission's main responsibility is to develop, implement, and monitor land use plans for the Nunavut settlement area that guide and direct resource use and development. The Commission is the entry point into Nunavut's regulatory system. So we are the first step when project proponents are looking to conduct activities in the territory. And the Commission's land use plans lay a foundation or a baseline for how these activities are to be conducted. The Commission currently has two existing approved regional land use plans, one in the Kiwetin, or obviously the current Kivalek region, as well as the North Baffin planning region. These land use plans were originally developed in the 1980s and approved in the early 1990s. They were then updated mostly on an administrative level to be consistent with the Nunavut Agreement and the creation of the Nunavut Territory and approved again in the early 2000s. So these plans are fairly dated. And other regions of Nunavut, including here in the Ktikmit, have never had an approved land use plan to guide land use in a consistent way across the region. I'll note that when the Nunavut Land Use Plan is approved, these two current regional land use plans will be replaced. And regions like here in the Ktikmit will have an approved land use plan for the first time. This planning process began quite some time ago and really got underway in November of 2007, about 15 years ago, with the approval of the Commission's broad planning policies, objectives, and goals. This document was developed in close collaboration with the Government of Canada, the Government of Nunavut, and Nunavut Tungavik to provide the foundation or the framework for how land use planning in the territory would be conducted. So with this overarching framework established through these broad planning policies, objectives, and goals, the Commission began developing the Draft Nunavut Land Use Plan in 2007. There have been many years of workshops and meetings and discussions on the priorities and structure of the Draft Nunavut Land Use Plan. I'll just quickly note that previous drafts of the plan were released in 2012, 2014, 2016, and most recently in July of 2021. Each of these draft plans have built on the previous draft, and they have all followed a similar but changing structure as feedback was received on each of the drafts. Since the plan was released a little over a year ago, Commission staff have visited all Nunavut communities and met with community representatives to provide a similar overview of the draft plan and prepare them for these hearings that we're very pleased are now happening this fall. Commission staff have also been in regular contact with all participants that expressed interest in holding information sessions where we have responded to questions and clarified the content and intent of the draft plan. And we have very thankfully received many written submissions already on the draft plan from a large number of participants. And we thank all the participants for their keen engagement and interest in this planning process. Just a few more notes on the community involvement throughout the development of this plan. The Commission has a strong mandate and responsibility to work closely with communities in the development of this plan. That includes not only here in Ktikmit, but across Nunavut, as well as to transboundary communities, in particular in northern Manitoba and Saskatchewan, as well as communities in northern Quebec that have equal rights in certain areas of the Nunavut settlement area. The Commission has visited each community multiple times and recorded extensive values that each community has prioritized. So we have many thousands of areas recorded directly with groups of community members reflecting their priorities and values on their lands. We have also repeatedly visited communities to not only do group mapping sessions to identify values, but also individual, one-on-one interviews with land users to document where and how community members are using the land. And we have also worked closely with communities on each draft to present the concepts in the draft plan, collect feedback, identify gaps, and proposed management strategies at each step of the way. I'll note that the Draft Land Use Plan is also supported by a much larger and more detailed document called the Options and Recommendations Document. In 2021, this document was given a significant update and overhaul to make the Commission's decision-making and considerations more transparent and consistent for the benefit of all participants in the planning process. This runs for many hundreds of pages, and we don't expect that all participants would have reviewed all of this detail. But if there are particular areas of interest or concern, this document provides the background information to understand why the plan looks the way it does. In this document, the Commission introduced consistent and rigorous rating criteria for each individual area. And I just want to note briefly that a number of different criteria were considered, including the overall importance of an issue. So this was used to identify, for example, the priorities of participants in this planning process and why the land use plan currently addresses, for example, species like polar bear and their habitat, but not grizzly bears and their habitat. Because polar bear was identified as being overall more important to participants in this planning process. The Commission also considered how well the geographic boundaries or identified areas were determined. Some areas can be very precisely known, like a watershed, for example, while others may be more variable or more difficult to define. For example, moving wildlife habitat. We also, for each and every issue, considered the environmental and cultural importance of these areas. For example, distinguishing between the importance of caribou calving areas compared to caribou summer habitat. For each issue as well, the non-renewable resource, transportation, and linear infrastructure potential was considered. And that is an important aspect of the plan to consider in balance to the environmental and cultural priorities that are being considered. We also, for each and every issue, considered the sensitivity to impacts of an area. Again, hearing things like walrus haulouts are particular areas where wildlife are very sensitive when they're at these locations. And finally, other regulatory tools were also considered. So the draft plan is not intended to duplicate or overlap strongly with other organizations mandates. So that was considered for every issue. I just note these criteria to emphasize that, again, a consistent and transparent process was undertaken to consider each issue in the draft plan. And then this was followed by an evaluation of the different options that were considered for how to manage each area that had been identified. The structure of the land use plan itself consists of six main chapters, and we'll go through each of those in turn today. The document is supported by a series of appendices and tables at the back of the land use plan that provide more detail on certain plan requirements. And there's also, very importantly, a series of large-format poster maps that you see at the back of the hall that show areas where certain uses are managed in particular ways. And we'll look at those in turn as well. Chapter one deals with land use planning in the Nunavut settlement area generally and provides an introduction to the land use plan itself. There are some key concepts in this chapter that we just want to highlight for this week's discussions. First of all, on the jurisdiction of the land use plan, it's important to note that any of the requirements that are being proposed in the draft plan would not apply to community land use. So when community members go out and conduct harvesting activities, camping, boating, all of these activities are not affected by the requirements of any of the Commission's land use plans. These requirements are meant to apply to other, what we call, project proponents that are coming into the territory, looking to conduct activities, including things like mineral exploration, tourism, scientific research, and things of that nature. For the geographic jurisdiction, the Nunavut Land Use Plan is drafted to apply to the entirety of the Nunavut settlement area, as well as what's called the Outer Landfast Ice Zone off the coast of Baffin Island. So the Nunavut settlement area is defined under the Nunavut Agreement and is slightly different from the territory of Nunavut primarily in that it does not include portions of the marine environment that are within Canada, but not within the settlement area as defined in the agreement. I'll also note that the Commission does have jurisdiction within municipal boundaries, but only for certain uses. So the construction of new municipal roads and subdivisions, for example, are not subject to the requirements of the Nunavut Land Use Plan. But certain industrial activities, for example, do need to conform to the Commission's land use plan, such as things like quarries, the deposit of waste, or the bulk storage of fuel. The land use plan also applies equally to crown land and Inuit-owned lands, both surface and subsurface. Areas where the Commission does not have jurisdiction within the Nunavut settlement area include established parks, both national and territorial, as well as certain national historic sites when administered by Parks Canada, including the nearby wrecks of the Erebus and Terror. Map A is a really important part of the plan that sets out the locations where plan requirements apply. So there's a lot of different mapping components as part of the draft plan, but Map A is the most important aspect. Again, setting out the geographic or area-based boundaries where certain requirements are proposed to apply. And again, you can see those at the back of the hall. There are three different types of land use designations in the 2021 Draft Plan. The first, shown in red on Map A, are limited-use designations within which there is at least one type of activity that is prohibited or not allowed all year round. These are the most restrictive types of land use designations. And they can also include other plan requirements, such as seasonal restrictions or setbacks from certain areas. And a setback is a minimum distance that you need to stay away from sensitive areas. The second type of land use designation is known as conditional use areas. These are shown in yellowish-orange on Map A. They're more flexible than the limited-use designation. There are no year-round prohibitions or restrictions on activities, but there are other conformity requirements, including those same examples of seasonal restrictions. including those same examples of seasonal restrictions or setback requirements. The final type of land use designation is known as mixed use, and in these areas, there are no prohibited uses or other plan requirements. However, in these areas, and indeed in all designations, there can also be what we call valued components that are identified for consideration. And these valued components are presented in Map B. Again, the Commission has been consulting on this draft plan for 15 years, and in that time has collected a lot of information on different values across the territory. Not all of that information is reflected on Map A as land use designations with boundaries and specific plan requirements. The other information the Commission has collected is a very important part of the land use plan, and it's proposed that by identifying all of these valued components, the Commission, through our land use plans, can add value to the regulatory system by identifying all of this information at the very beginning of the regulatory process for project proponents to consider in the design of their projects. As well, this information can be packaged and passed along to other regulatory authorities to give them a bit of a head start or some advance information on the areas where the project proposals they're considering will be taking place. This has the benefit of preventing communities from repeating themselves as different individual projects are being reviewed, and captures and reflects all of the information that was collected by the Commission over the last 15 years. A brief summary of some of the area calculations, and we'll take a more detailed look later in the presentation. But we just want to highlight off the top that in the 2021 draft plan, mixed-use areas, again, these are the least restrictive, where all land uses would conform or be supported by the land use plan. These mixed-use areas account for over 65% of Nunavut. Conditional use areas, so those are the more flexible type of designation, shown in yellow on Map A, represent a little over 9% of the settlement area in outer landfast ice zone. Limited-use areas, again, the most restrictive type of designation that typically prohibit or not allow a number of industrial activities. They represent over 22% of the settlement area. And finally, areas outside of NPC's jurisdiction, including established parks, represent a little over 3% of the territory. And we'll be taking a closer look at some regional breakdowns in a later section. Just a quick note, I've mentioned a few times, seasonal restrictions play an important part of this draft land use plan. The Commission has considered the six traditional Inuit seasons that are more reflective of Nunavut's environment, rather than...
[speaking Ngunnuk] 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 [speaking Ngunnuk]
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. As I was noting, the draft plan recognizes and includes seasonal restrictions on the basis of the six traditional Inuit seasons. Also included in an appendix at the back of the plan are regional variations of the calendar days applicable to the different seasons. And we just wanted to highlight that as an aspect of the draft plan and how these seasonal restrictions are managed in a way that is appropriate to the territory. Chapter two of the draft plan moves into the first goal of the land use plan, and this is on protecting and sustaining the environment. I'll note that this goal comes from that 2007 Broad Planning Policies, Objectives, and Goals document, as will the following chapters and their associated goals. As you can see, there are a number of different wildlife habitats primarily included in this chapter. I'll go through each of these topics, focusing on those of most relevance and priority to communities here in the Ktikmiut, and we'll pass over some of the sections more quickly that have less relevance here in this region. The first section of chapter two deals with key migratory bird habitat sites. Nunavut is home to abundant populations of migratory birds during the spring and summer months. And the Commission has received very detailed submissions from, in particular, the Government of Canada through environment and climate change regarding the various migratory bird habitats across the territory, as well as their relative importance and sensitivities, as well as recommended requirements for these areas. So again, the information here primarily came from the Government of Canada and has been supplemented by feedback from other participants in the planning process. But there are three different classes of migratory bird habitat sites in the draft plan. The Class 1 sites are identified in the draft plan as limited-use areas with year-round restrictions on industrial activities, on some industrial activities, including things like mineral exploration and development, oil and gas exploration, quarries, all-weather roads. And also include additional setback requirements from key, typically nesting areas, within the larger area. And these setback requirements would apply to other land uses that are supported by the draft plan. So for example, there can be marine setbacks that a cruise ship, for example, would need to adhere to. As well as aerial setbacks or minimum heights that things like helicopters or aircraft would need to maintain when flying over these bird colonies. There are also Class 2 sites where there are no proposed year-round restrictions, but there are still setbacks that would apply to project proposals in these areas. And finally, there's a Class 3 of migratory bird habitat sites that are identified as valued components. So here in this first section, we can see the full range of different options that are available in the draft plan, from limited-use areas to conditional-use areas, or in fact, mixed-use areas with a valued ecosystem component overlay on top of that. There are, yeah, a few of these locations here in the Ktikmiut, including the Bathurst and Ilu inlet area, south of Cambridge Bay here, as well as some important Palinyia areas near Kaluktok as examples. The next topic in chapter two is a very important one for all of our public hearings, and we expect to hear a lot about this topic this week here in Cambridge Bay. As we all know, caribou are an essential part of Nunavut's environment, community well-being, and are a key concern for many of the participants in this planning process. The draft plan includes a number of different types of caribou habitat, and we'll go through each of those in turn. The first slide here shows caribou calving and post-calving areas, which have both been identified in the draft land use plan as limited-use areas with year-round prohibitions or restrictions on many industrial activities, again, including things like mineral exploration and development, all-weather roads, quarries, as well as things like oil and gas exploration and development, as well as hydroelectric power generation. With both calving and post-calving areas, the primary or initial data set for these habitats was provided by the Government of Nunavut, and it was based on satellite collaring data for analysis into area-based locations that caribou are using during these different parts of their life cycle. It's important to note that the Government of Nunavut's statistical or computer-based analysis was only able to be done for caribou on the mainland of Nunavut, not on the islands. So the Commission, of course, has been consulting on this draft plan for some time, and that initial Government of Nunavut data set has been supplemented or added to through community consultations on additional important caribou habitat. And you'll see, for example, caribou calving area added north of here on Victoria Island. This came from community members here in Cambridge Bay, and as well as on islands throughout the rest of the territory as identified by community representatives and hunters and trappers organizations. Although the draft plan proposes this limited-use designation in these areas for these herds of caribou, the Commission notes that in written responses that have been received so far, there are certainly a number of different views and recommendations on how the plan should be modified or changed to reflect different perspectives. So for example, some participants have recommended that year-round prohibitions are not required on either of these types of habitats. Other participants have noted that even drawing boundaries on the map and having area-based protections is not appropriate, and that mobile protection measures that move with the herd would be a better approach. Others take issue with the way the boundaries have been defined. And of course, others support the plan the way it has been drafted with the measures that have been included. The Commission appreciates all of the feedback that has been received to date. All of that will be given full consideration. And we look forward to hearing from all participants, not only this week, but in the hearings to come, about participants' views on how to manage this really important issue in the draft Nunavut Land Use Plan. Moving on, we also have identified caribou key access corridors on the mainland. Again, this was habitat defined by the Government of Nunavut as areas important for caribou to access their calving areas. This has not been the subject of a great deal of discussion among community members, for example. The data as represented does come from the Government of Nunavut and is included in the draft plan as, again, a limited-use area with year-round prohibitions, as well as seasonal restrictions on other uses that do conform to the land use plan. On the right-hand side of this slide, we also see caribou freshwater crossings. These areas have also been included in the draft plan as limited-use areas with year-round prohibitions. In this case, there are no seasonal restrictions on the caribou freshwater crossings, as that information was not available for each of these locations. I will note that the caribou freshwater crossings have been given a 10-kilometer buffer around the site of the crossing. So that's 10 kilometers in each direction, as was recommended by several participants in response to the 2016 draft plan. However, we note this continues to be an area of discussion, and some participants have recommended, for example, that this 10-kilometer buffer could be reduced to 5 kilometers, for example. So that's another example of an issue where the Commission encourages all participants to provide feedback on whether these types of changes are appropriate or not. Continuing with different types of caribou habitat, on the left-hand side, we have caribou sea ice crossings. This is a big concern here in Cambridge Bay in particular. We know where caribou herds migrate on and off of islands each year as part of their life cycle, and there's a significant concern regarding shipping disrupting the ability of caribou to migrate across the sea ice. of caribou to migrate across the sea ice. The draft plan identifies these areas as conditional-use areas with seasonal restrictions on shipping to prevent ice breaking that would disrupt the caribou migrations. On the right-hand side, we have peri-caribou areas, not here in this region, so I'll just quickly note that those are included in the draft plan as limited-use areas as well. For caribou winter ranges, I want to note that there are regional and herd-specific differences in the importance of winter ranges, and the commission has taken a different approach for winter ranges depending on the herd. For here in the Ktikmiut, based on information provided to the commission, it was considered that winter ranges on the mainland were not as important habitat as some of the previous ones that were discussed, and they're identified as valued components here in the Ktikmiut. But just for point of reference, in some locations, in the Keketaluk region, caribou wintering areas are considered to be very important locations and essential for caribou survival, and those locations are included as limited use, but that's only in the northern portions of the Keketaluk region. On the right-hand side, we have caribou migration corridors, which are included in the draft plan as valued components as well. Again, demonstrating the abundance of caribou information that has been submitted as part of this planning process, we also have caribou summer, late summer, and rutting areas identified. These are all other examples of valued components in the draft plan. So again, that represents all of the different caribou habitats that have been raised and fully considered in the 2021 draft plan, and we do anticipate hearing a great deal about the management of these areas throughout this hearing. The next section of Chapter 2 deals with polar bear denning areas. This information came from a variety of sources, including the government of Nunavut, as well as the Keketaluk Wildlife Board in the Keketaluk region, and through direct community consultations that the commission has conducted with community members. All of these polar bear denning areas are included in the draft plan as conditional-use areas with seasonal requirements on certain activities. So again, in polar bear denning areas, there are no prohibited uses, and there is a requirement proposed that in identified polar bear denning areas during denning season, that proponents looking to disturb the ground or move the earth or snow, like drilling or blasting or using heavy equipment, would first have to have a polar bear monitor conduct a survey of the location they were looking to conduct work in, identify any potential polar bear dens, and then avoid that area until the polar bear monitor confirmed that the bears had left the location. The next topic is walrus haulouts. They're identified as limited-use areas in the draft plan, and not having any identified in the Ktikmiut region, I'll move on. Next, we have a series of whale calving areas. On Slide 30, we have beluga and narwhal calving. On the next slide, there's also bowhead calving areas. And most of these areas are in the Keketaluk and Kivalek regions. I will note that some select calving areas for all three species of whale are included as limited-use areas. These tend to be smaller coves or bays where shipping does not normally occur, so these measures would restrict vessels from entering the areas. But many of the identified calving areas intersect or overlap with primary shipping lanes within the territory, and for all of those calving areas, a valued component approach was recommended in the draft plan. Also on this slide, there's a section on Atlantic cod lakes, again, applicable to the area around Akaluit, and I'll move past that, but it is included as a valued component. Moving on to Slide 32, there are some different marine areas that have been identified across the territory. On the left-hand side, we see, it's a bit of a mouthful, but ecologically and biologically significant areas. These are portions of Nunavut's marine environment identified by the Department of Fisheries and Oceans within the federal government as being important for various reasons. As you can see on the map, they're relatively broadly identified, and did not come with specific recommendations for managing use in these areas, but the commission has received the information and included them in the draft plan as valued components. A similar approach was taken generally for palinyias, or areas of open water during the winter season, of identifying most of them as valued components. However, some palinyias, including in Section 2.1, we noted, are included within migratory bird habitats, and we'll see on the next slide an example of a conditional-use area. The last section I want to touch on here is transboundary considerations, or areas that cross borders. On the left-hand side of this slide, you can see down on the Northwest Territories border, there is a portion of the Great Bear Lake watershed that extends into Nunavut. So this lake has been identified in the Satu region as a really important cultural and environmental area, and part of that watershed begins in Nunavut. So that is identified in the draft plan as a transboundary issue and is included as a valued component. The right-hand slide shows a particular palinyia near Grese Fjord, the Northwater or Savaryuk Palinyia. It's being considered as an internationally managed Inuit-driven conservation area, and the draft plan identifies it as a conditional-use area. There's one final section in Chapter 2 that addresses climate change, and I just want to note, there are no maps here for climate change, but there is a section in the draft at the end of Chapter 2 that notes, while there are no specific areas identified in this land use designation system, the issue of climate change has been considered throughout the development of the plan. And for example, increased sensitivity of caribou due to the effects of climate change was considered by commissioners when they made their recommendations on how to manage habitat in the draft plan. So for example, increased insect harassment affecting caribou, increased forest fires in the southern portions of their ranges, as well as things like increased icing events, having thicker ice rather than snow for caribou to dig through, or climate change impacting how much time polar bear can spend feeding on sea ice. So those types of considerations are part of the land use plan overall as well. Chapter 3 reflects the second goal of the plan for encouraging conservation planning. As I noted earlier, the commission does not have jurisdiction within established national and territorial parks, but there are a number of them that are still in process and are not yet fully established, where the commission still does have jurisdiction. And in addition, the commission does have jurisdiction within established conservation So these are all considered within this chapter. The first section is on future national and territorial parks. These areas have been identified as limited-use areas with year-round prohibitions on oil and gas, mineral exploration, development, roads, all-weather roads, and those similar type of activities I noted previously. I just want to note that a number of territorial parks here in the Ktikmiut in particular, here in Cambridge Bay, as well as in Kaloktok, the territorial parks, people may believe they are fully established. There's a sign if you want to drive out to Uvayuk Territorial Park, there's flags flying and picnic benches and all that, but the paperwork isn't done. So because of that, the NPC still has jurisdiction within these areas, and they are included in the draft plan as limited-use designations. The right-hand side shows a bit of a special case that I'll mention. National marine conservation areas, despite the title, act more like a park under legislation. So fully-established national marine conservation areas will not be within the commission's There is one, of course, in Lancaster Sound area, the Torreyup Emenga Proposed National Marine Conservation Area. It is well-advanced but not yet finalized, so it is also included as a limited-use designation in this draft plan, again, applying to the Keketaluk region. On this slide, we have national wildlife areas and migratory bird sanctuaries. These are all proposed to be limited-use designations in the draft plan. Here in the Ktikmiut, we do not have any national wildlife areas. However, there is a very large and prominent migratory bird sanctuary, the Queen Maud Gulf, to the south, shown on the right-hand side. This area is included, again, as a limited-use designation with year-round prohibitions, as well as setback requirements for other conforming uses. I will note that this is another example of an issue where there are some significant differences of opinion on how the draft plan should manage these areas. Some participants support the draft plan, including a limited-use designation and prohibiting certain activities within these established conservation areas, while there are other participants that view this approach as an overstep or an overreach compared to what is already included in the negotiated Inuit Impact and Benefit Agreements for these conservation areas and the existing management structures. So there can be an option to, of course, leave this as drafted, or to include this more as effectively a mixed-use area where all projects would conform, and the existing management structures would continue to consider all projects that are submitted within these areas. And I note that applies more generally to several of these conservation areas that are identified as limited-use areas, including things like historic sites, shown on Slide 37. So for national historic sites, I noted at the start, if they're administered by Parks Canada, the commission does not have jurisdiction. However, there's only the recently discovered Franklin wrecks that fall within that category. Other national historic sites, as well as territorial historic sites, remain subject to the commission's jurisdiction and are included as limited-use areas in the draft The right-hand side shows Canadian heritage rivers. Each of these heritage rivers have their own management plans that have been prepared. However, they do not have regulatory authority, or teeth, to use a more common term, to enforce any particular requirements. So through the planning process, the commission has reviewed those management plans and included different requirements in the draft plan for each river. I'll note here in the Ktikmiut, the Copper Mine River is a nominated river that has a draft management plan that has not been approved, and the 2021 draft plan identifies the Copper Mine, the nominated Copper Mine Heritage River, as a valued component. In other regions, different approaches are taken based on those management plans, but I won't go into that in detail today. We also have, here in the Ktikmiut, and shared with both the Kivalek region as well as the Northwest Territories, the longstanding Phalon Wildlife Sanctuary, initially established in the 1920s and still in place today. This is included as a limited-use designation with year-round prohibitions on many activities as well. And finally, this chapter also considers marine-protected areas being considered under the Oceans Act by the Department of Fisheries and Oceans. So DFO, or the Department of Fisheries and Oceans, have identified two locations where they are beginning to discuss and consider the establishment of marine-protected areas. They're included as valued ecosystem components in the draft plan, and neither of them are here in the Ktikmiut. Chapter 4 is our third goal, building healthier communities. This chapter identifies a number of areas important to community health and wellbeing, and areas that are relied on by communities. and areas that are relied on by communities, not only for things like drinking water, but also the continuation of cultural practice, harvesting, and general community use. This chapter starts off with a very important topic, which is called community areas of interest. So of course, through this planning process, communities have been an integral part of identifying priorities and they have provided feedback on lots of wildlife habitat or economic opportunities. But this chapter focuses on areas, this section focuses on areas identified by communities for their own use. The first subsection applies territory-wide and it is community on-ice travel routes. So throughout Nunavut, the sea is frozen for much of the year and functions a lot like land. And communities, of course, use it for transportation. Just like in Chapter two, we talked about the concern of shipping during the frozen water months as being disruptive to caribou. It can also be extremely disruptive to community travel by creating open water while potentially land users and harvesters are away from home. So throughout the territory, the commission has identified routes used by community members, both through existing documentation and through direct mapping with communities themselves. And the draft plan proposes a conditional use designation for all of these on-ice travel routes. And a fairly unique approach is proposed whereby any project proponent that is proposing to ship during the winter months or the frozen water seasons, whether that's a single transit or a large number of transits in a given season. There's a requirement proposed in the draft plan where that company would be required to contact each community through their municipal council, as well as hunters and trappers organization, within 300 kilometers of the point where the ship track would cross one of these on-ice travel routes. They would need to discuss the proposed shipping, the scope and timing of activities, provide notice to communities, and consider whether solutions such as ice bridging could be appropriate in the particular situation at hand. So an ice bridge is a proposal that the commission has been made aware of, that has been used in other jurisdictions where a sort of pontoon bridge is placed over the track of a ship at known locations and times so that community members leaving home would know where to cross these ship tracks if they exist. There's a few slides on different regions. I'll just jump to Slide 44 and show the Ktikmiut. Here we have two primary community areas of interest included under this category in the draft plan. One, to the south of Cambridge Bay, known as the Hukataq River, identified by elders of Bathurst Inlet and Umingmaktok back in the early 2000s as a really important cultural area that they would like to see protected over time. This is an example of one of the earliest inputs into this planning process. This was considered as part of the West Ktikmiut Regional Land Use Plan and has been carried forward. It is included in the draft plan as a limited use designation with year-round prohibitions on many industrial activities. Another topic we expect to hear a great deal about this week is the area north of Tulloyawak, the Boothia Peninsula, has been for several years now the subject of discussion for some form of managed protection for this area. It has been included in the draft plan at the request of the community as a limited use area with year-round prohibitions on activities for the terrestrial component of the Boothia Peninsula itself. I will note that there have been additions to that area over time, including identified marine areas around the peninsula. In the 2021 draft, commissioners recommended to include those marine areas as valued components. So there are no restrictions in the draft plan in the surrounding marine areas around the Boothia Peninsula. But the peninsula itself is included as a limited use designation. I've mentioned several times that the commission has conducted extensive mapping with communities within Nunavut and in adjacent areas. These maps are kind of hard to look at in a static digital form. But I want to emphasize that on the left-hand side, these other community-identified priority areas represent over 3,000 individual areas that were identified by communities for particular value and there are specific comments associated with each of those thousands of areas. Some of that information has been used to inform community areas of interest and considered throughout the development of the land use plan for all other areas. But collectively, that entire data set is included in Chapter four as a valued component by itself. There are tables at the back of the land use plan that attempt to show that information in a summarized way in a hard copy document. But the real value of this information can be unlocked with computers and digital technology. And through our online implementation system, all of this information can be summarized and presented to project proponents when they are applying for submitting project proposals and then can also be passed on to other regulatory authorities for their consideration as well. And on the right-hand side of the map, we also have our collection of use and occupancy mapping information, reflecting over 10,000 individual points of how communities are using their lands. Again, has been considered throughout the development of the land use plan and is packaged here as a valued component for consideration. I'll just briefly note there are two sections here on other transboundary areas. The Deney-Southlande in northern Manitoba and Saskatchewan are negotiating settlements to gain rights within the southern Kivalek. That work is ongoing and we expect to hear about that in the coming weeks. I'll just note here, those areas are identified as valued components in the draft plan. On Slide 47, we also show areas of equal use and occupancy. This are between the Inuit of Nunavut and Nunavik. They are identified as valued components. Closer to home here, we have, on the right-hand side, unincorporated communities. I just want to note that this title of unincorporated communities refers only to the communities of Bathurst Inlet and Umingmaktok who are no longer considered by the government to be, you know, full communities with municipalities, the funding that gets accessed through that and government initiatives in place. They're different from things like camps, cabins, or even outpost camps and are a unique subset of areas in Nunavut. These two communities, because they don't have any government support, don't have things like planning. The commission has chosen to identify these two communities as limited use areas with prohibitions on certain activities within a two-kilometer radius of the residential base. Also, an important part of Chapter two deals with community drinking water supplies. So each community draws its drinking water from somewhere within the municipality. In many cases, like here in Cambridge Bay, the community's drinking water supply comes entirely from within the municipal boundaries. In those cases, the community's land use plans manage those areas already and the commission has chosen to just identify those as valued components for consideration in the draft plan. Other communities, like Kugaruk, have their community drinking water supply come from areas that include areas outside the municipal boundary. So waters flow into the municipal boundary. In this case, the draft plan proposes to pick up the protections or restrictions within municipal boundaries where communities are able to enforce those and extend them beyond the municipal boundary to support the wellbeing of your communities. There's another category of drinking water supply, like Kualuktok, where they're drawing water from the Copper Mine, which is a very large river. In these cases, the commission recommended to identify that very large watershed as a valued component with no prohibited uses. And the consideration was that would have been overly restrictive for the example of Kualuktok and Baker Lake, which draws from the Thelon. So different approach for drinking water supplies for each community. The draft plan also identifies what are called priority contaminated sites. So the commission is aware that there are many waste sites and abandoned fuel drums, abandoned camps, up to abandoned mine sites and military installations that can be very harmful to human health. So the draft plan is only trying to identify these priority sites that are of particular concern. And they are included as limited use areas with restrictions on activities like drilling and establishing landing pads and things like that. As you know, Nunavut is also home to a number of military facilities. Here in Cambridge Bay, you certainly would have seen the the old Dewline site or the North Warning System site out by the airport. These locations across the territory have operated for quite some time and based on recent announcements, look to continue for quite some time as well. And there are concerns about other types of activities impacting the functioning of these military facilities. And the draft plan includes limited use designations where they fall outside of municipal boundaries and where they're within municipal boundary, like here in Cambridge Bay, they're identified as valued components. The draft plan also identifies a few potential alternative energy sources. These are all hydroelectric power locations or potential hydroelectric power locations. They have been included as valued components as well. And finally, Chapter four also includes aerodromes or the area around airports. These locations are now fully managed by Transport Canada regulations that govern what can be built near airports. So this draft plan only includes these areas as valued components with no formal plan requirements. Chapter five moves into our final goal, which is encouraging sustainable economic development. There are four topics in this chapter and we'll go through each of these in turn as well. The first topic is on mineral exploration and production. So the left-hand map in the lighter orange color shows areas with evidence for mineral potential as identified by the Government of Canada. This is not a ranked rating. It's just, is there potential or not in terms of available evidence? So this collectively is included as a valued component. I also note on this map, in the darker orange shade, are areas with existing mineral rights. And we'll talk about those in the next chapter in more detail. And here, we just want to note that both areas with evidence for mineral potential and areas with existing mineral rights have been considered in each subsection of the draft plan. So I noted in the Options and Recommendations document, there is an assessment of the potential for non-renewable resources. And these are the data sets that were relied on in the 2021 draft plan when making those assessments. In addition, this chapter also includes oil and gas exploration and production. So there's, of course, currently a federal moratorium on oil and gas exploration in the Arctic. But there are still a number of oil and gas significant discovery licenses that are still held in the very high Arctic in the Sverdrup Basin. None of these are within the Ktikmiut. But we can just note that those significant discovery licenses are identified as valued components in the draft plan. The next topic deals with terrestrial transportation and communication. The draft plan has identified existing linear infrastructure or transportation, things like roads, as well as proposed linear infrastructure and has taken some different approaches depending on each individual circumstance. and has taken some different approaches depending on each individual circumstance. I first want to note, as an example, on the right-hand side of this slide, you can see the Kivalek to Manitoba linear infrastructure corridor. And I use this as an example to note that the draft plan identifies this corridor as a limited-use area that attempts to protect that area for future development. So in the draft plan, this corridor is identified as an area for future development, and the construction of all-weather roads, linear infrastructure, things like transmission lines or communications cables would explicitly conform to the plan as drafted. In other areas, like in the North Baffin region, with infrastructure associated with the Mary River Project, the Commission has carried over certain plan requirements to the amended North Baffin Regional Land Use Plan. Other existing and potential linear infrastructure in the Territory is included in the current draft as valued components. So things like the Meadowbank Road is included as a valued component. Coming back here to the Katikmiut, we note there are a few transportation initiatives that have been and are being considered, including the Graysebey Port and Road, as well as the Bathurst Inlet Port and Road. These two initiatives are included in the draft plan as valued components. And the Commission notes that multiple participants have made very strong recommendations that these initiatives, in particular Graysebey Port and Road, as well as the Bathurst Inlet Port and Road, be included in the draft plan explicitly as areas where this type of use would be supported or conform to the land use plan. So that is something our Commissioners will be considering in the new year when revising the plan. And we, in particular, draw attention to this issue and invite comment from other participants on this recommendation, noting that, for example, the Graysebey Port and Road does pass through identified caribou habitat that would currently prohibit its development the way the plan is currently drafted. The next slide shows marine shipping. And this represents draft work done by the Northern Marine Transportation Corridor Initiative, being worked on by Transport Canada and the Coast Guard and other partners. This information was provided to the Commission for consideration, but explicitly recommended not to be included in the draft plan itself. So this slide simply shows information on where future corridors may be developed and where shipping is currently occurring, but it is not reflected in the land use plan itself. The next slide identifies different commercial fishing areas. Here in the Katikmiut, of course, there is an abundance of Arctic char, and there are active commercial fisheries. And I hope you get to experience some of the char from the Katikmiut Foods Plant here in town while you're visiting. The draft plan identifies both areas of char abundance, shown in the gray-shaded areas on the left-hand side, as well as locations identified within fisheries regulations as having commercial quotas on them. So not all of these points are water bodies that are currently being fished, or may even have ever been fished, but they have been identified as having that type of potential and quota capacity. All of this information is, again, identified as a valued component for consideration. There's also a number of turbid and shrimp fishery considerations. None of those applicable here in the Katikmiut, so I'll just move on. Chapter Six deals with...
Yeah, Jonathan, recognizing the time on Chapter Six. And according to twelve, we should take a quick lunch break and come back for one fifteen.
I'll take a short break for lunch before Chapter Six is resumed this afternoon. Be back at one fifteen for the proceedings this afternoon. Delegates from the communities, please stay behind. Thank you. I think we can start the proceedings this afternoon. Before John starts his briefing, for those of you who just got into the community, welcome to the hall. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jonathan, oh, sorry. Sharonah Halawak, Nunavut Planning Commission Executive Director. I'm turning it back over to Jonathan Savoy with the Nunavut Planning Commission. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you very much. Hope everyone had a good lunch break, got to get out and stretch a little bit. Warm welcome to those who have just arrived on the plane. We're happy to have a full house. It's fantastic to see. This morning, we covered Chapters One through Five of the 2021 Draft Nunavut Land Use Plan. Just as a quick recap, in Chapter One, we touched on some of the key concepts that the plan relies on, including the three types of land use designations, the limited-use areas, which come with year-round prohibitions or restricted activities, as well as other plan requirements like setbacks or seasonal restrictions, onto the more flexible conditional use areas where there are no year-round prohibitions. But there are plan requirements, including things like setbacks or minimum distances to stay away from important areas, as well as seasonal restrictions. And then finally, mixed-use areas where all land uses are permitted, those being the three main types of designations that the plan proposes to guide land use. And on top of that, the terminology is valued components we use to identify all other types of valued information that has been identified through the process. Chapters Two through Five, dealing with the different goals of the land use plan. Chapter Two, we talked about the key migratory bird habitat sites and the extensive information on caribou habitat that we're expecting to hear a lot about this week, as well as things like polar bear denning and marine mammal habitats. Chapter Three, on encouraging conservation planning. Here in the Katikmiut, a significant issue is around the Queen Maud migratory bird sanctuary. In Chapter Four, on building healthier communities, we talked about areas important to communities, including the Boothia Peninsula, the Hukutek River, and also things like community drinking water supplies. In Chapter Five, we discussed areas important to encouraging sustainable economic development. We had noted the existing rights, existing mineral rights, that we're going to discuss at greater length here in Chapter Six, along with economic development initiatives like the Graysebey Port and Road, as well as the Bathurst Inlet Port and Road, that have been recommended to be included explicitly in the draft plan, as well as important commercial fishing areas here in the Katikmiut. The draft plan is required, under the Nunavut Agreement, to have an implementation strategy or a plan for how it will be implemented and used once the document is approved. So Chapter Six is this required implementation strategy, and there are a few key concepts and approaches in this chapter that we just want to highlight and flag some likely areas for discussion this week. Just again, a quick clarification that the Nunavut Land Use Plan will not apply to community land use and harvesting. So if there is a setback requirement around a bird colony, for example, that would not need to be followed by community land users, not subject to the requirements of this plan. In addition, the limited-use areas all include at least one prohibited use or a use that is not allowed at any time of the year. And it's important to note that activities that are not included in those lists of uses that are prohibited are permitted. So if the list includes mineral exploration and oil and gas exploration and development, for example, but doesn't mention scientific research, or tourism, or military exercises, then all of those other uses would conform or be supported by the plan as drafted. One other important clarification in the draft plan is that in many limited-use designations, linear infrastructure is prohibited. And linear infrastructure is defined to include things like all-weather roads, pipelines, transmission lines, fiber-optic communications lines, but it does not include seasonal or winter roads. So in the limited-use areas in the current draft, the construction of all-weather roads would be prohibited or not allowed, but project proponents could rely on winter roads in all of the areas of the draft plan. I mentioned this a few times already today. The draft plan, the 2021 draft plan, proposes a new approach in the planning process for considering and addressing existing mineral rights. Note that this approach was only applied to existing mineral rights, not other types of rights. This is because the Commission understands that mineral exploration and development occurs in stages. When project proponents, companies go out on the land looking for minerals, they're not in a position to propose a full-blown mine. It's a staged process that can take a great deal of time and resources to fully develop into an operating mine. Now, there's an issue that arises with the drafting of this land use plan and the way the legislation works, where when a project undergoes what's called a significant modification or a major change in the scope of their activities, a new review by the Nunavut Planning Commission and Nunavut's regulatory system is required. So significant investments have been made in many areas that are included in the draft plan as proposed limited-use areas that would prohibit mineral exploration and development. As a way to recognize these investments and the importance of the mining industry to the Territory, the 2021 draft proposes that projects with existing rights in limited-use areas would be exempt from prohibitions on mineral exploration and development when they undergo one of those significant modifications or changes that requires a new review by the NPC. The draft plan identifies these projects with existing rights in limited-use areas in Appendix A of the draft plan. It's important to note that, as drafted, these projects would only be exempt from the prohibition in the draft plan on mineral exploration and development. But other requirements of the draft plan would continue to apply. So if there's an existing mineral exploration project in a limited-use area, and there are prohibitions on mining, that project would be exempt from the prohibitions, would be supported or conform to the land use plan. But there may be other things, like setback requirements around particularly important areas that would continue to apply to these projects. This proposal has generated a lot of response and discussion in the written record that has been received to date. We expect to hear a great deal about this approach during the hearing, and not only here, but in the hearings to come. And I would just like to make a few more points about this approach for everyone's context in advance of these discussions. This material was previously released in one of several question-and-answer documents that the Commission has responded to in writing. But for everyone's clarification today, there were several choices that the Commission made when determining which projects with existing rights within limited-use areas would appear in Appendix A with the proposed approach to gain exemptions from any prohibitions. The first step in preparing this appendix for the 2021 draft was that Commission went and downloaded mineral rights data from both the Government of Canada on Crownland, as well as from Nunavut Tungavik for Inuit-owned land subsurface parcels. And this data came from the spring of 2021. So that's an important factor to consider, that all of these projects come from before the spring of 2021. The Commission then chose to select only active projects from within those databases. So there are other projects that have, are lapsed or are no longer active. Those were removed from the database. We then selected only the rights that overlap with proposed limited-use designations in the 2021 draft that would prohibit mineral exploration and development. So if any companies or industry representatives are here today and don't see a particular project that is active, one possible reason that it's not on that list is that it did not overlap with limited-use areas in the current draft. The Commission then also chose to select projects that have been previously reviewed and approved by the Nunavut Regulatory System. And we did that by searching through our own records, which are complete since 2015, when we became the entry point into Nunavut's regulatory system. And for projects predating the enactment of the Nunavut Planning and Project Assessment Act, we also conducted searches of the Nunavut Impact Review Board and Nunavut Water Board registries to find traces or records of these projects entering Nunavut's regulatory system. So, for example, if a mineral right had been issued early in 2021, but that proponent had not yet submitted a project proposal to Nunavut's regulatory system, it would not appear in Appendix A. And that is a choice that commissioners made when preparing the draft. In addition, a very small number of project proposals that were reviewed and not approved by the Nunavut Regulatory System, but for which rights were still actively held, were also removed from the Appendix A database. Again, these are the selection criteria that the Commission used to identify the projects in Appendix A. There are certainly diverse views on whether these criteria were appropriate. And some participants have recommended, for example, that all existing rights be included in this appendix, regardless of whether they have been reviewed by the Nunavut Regulatory System and regardless of whether they had been approved by the system. All of this feedback, of course, will be given full consideration by commissioners in the new year when revising the plan. And we look forward to hearing additional comments and suggestions on this approach during these hearings and in any further written submissions that may be received. This small inset map shows a portion of Appendix A, where these projects with existing rights are identified on a separate map, and including a summary of the company name and project name for these projects with existing mineral rights. It was a deliberate choice to identify these projects in an appendix to the land use plan, as the Commission anticipates that, over time, some of these projects will not proceed to full development as mines. As we know, not every exploration project is successful and ends up in an operating mine. So over time, if some of these projects abandon some of these rights, then this appendix could be amended through an administrative process to remove those areas where rights have been abandoned or lapsed, to just maintain a consistent record of those projects with existing rights within limited-use areas. I mentioned there have been some comments relating to the selection criteria that the Commission used for this proposed approach in the draft plan. There have also been a number of other suggestions made to modify this approach. One of the concerns that has been raised by a number of participants is that associated linear infrastructure with these projects with existing rights would currently require a plan amendment to, for example, build an all-weather road to access some of these locations. So the existing right only expands to the footprint of those mineral rights that have been issued. But if an all-weather road, for example, is required to reach the site, and a winter road is not appropriate, then a plan amendment would be needed. So some participants have suggested that associated linear infrastructure also be permitted to travel through the surrounding limited-use areas. In addition, some participants have noted the concern that these current existing rights under the plan as drafted would not be allowed to expand. So if viable resources were identified on that property and looked to expand beyond the current footprint, again, a plan amendment would be required under the current draft. So that's another example of some of the feedback that has been received to date. And I just mention, for reference, of all participants in advance of our discussions. There are a number of ways that the plan can be changed or modified over time. The plan has often been described as a living document in that it's meant to be changeable over time and respond to changing circumstances. The first and simplest way to change the requirements of the plan is through what's known as a minor variance. So a minor variance is a small change to a requirement of the land use plan. So this could be used, for example, to reduce a setback. So if a road had to stay one kilometer away from a certain identified area, but perhaps there was a rock outcrop or a cliff or something that prevented them from staying a kilometer away, they'd have to go 800 meters away. A minor variance is an efficient way for the Commission to consider the circumstances of that particular project post-notice for a very short period of time and identify if there are any objections to the granting of such a variance, and then process that in an efficient timeframe. That is only applicable to plan requirements that are not prohibitions. So if an exploration project wanted to expand into a limited-use area, that could not be done with a minor variance. Land use planning has other processes to deal with more significant changes to the land use plan. And those are known as plan amendments, which can be proposed at any time. So as I noted in that example, a project proponent can propose a plan amendment to modify or change the requirements of the land use plan to allow their project to proceed. But a plan amendment can also be used to change the plan in the face of new information or changing circumstances. For example, if a community identified an additional or secondary drinking water supply as not contemplated today, in a few years from now, that municipality can propose a plan amendment to the Commission to include measures to manage their drinking water supply that may extend beyond municipal boundaries. That process would require a public review by the Commission, including, if appropriate, public hearings like this event here today, and would have to be submitted to the federal government, the territorial government, and Nunavut Tungavik the same way as this draft plan must be before it takes effect. In addition, those plan amendments could have an even greater scale. So not just one municipality's drinking water supply, it could be a regional or territorial issue that could be reconsidered. And the scope or scale of the public review would be at the Commission's discretion and could be tailored to meet the requirements of the given amendment. In addition to minor variances and plan amendments, there's a requirement, under the Nunavut Agreement, for the Commission's land use plans to be periodically reviewed, or from time to time, they need to be considered in their entirety. Neither the Nunavut Agreement nor the legislation specify a timeframe for this periodic review. But the Commission has heard throughout the planning process that participants are interested in having certainty on when and how these periodic reviews will be conducted. So in the 2021 draft plan, there is a new proposal, proposed by the Commission, that within seven years following the approval of the Nunavut Land Use Plan, the Commission would begin a full review of the entire land use plan and to complete that review within 10 years of approval. Recognizing the enormous scale of the territory, the enormous effort that has been put into developing this draft plan, the Commission felt that that was a reasonable middle ground as to how frequently these periodic reviews can and should occur. So with this proposal, the Commission, of course, would continuously be conducting land use planning efforts, working with communities and other participants to be responsive to things like plan amendments and ongoing changing circumstances. But we could all agree in advance that, within this seven-to-10-year timeframe, following the approval, there would be extra effort put into conducting a fulsome review of the entire draft plan, going back to including, revisiting those 2007 broad planning policies, objectives, and goals. On Slide 62, there is an overview of Map A1, which is a summary of the land use designations in the draft plan in the Katicmiet region. Looking at this map, you can identify a significant number of red limited-use designations. Right in the center, of course, is the Queen Maud Gulf, migratory bird sanctuary, which sort of dominates the central portion of this map as a limited-use area. You can also see a lot on the mainland of red limited-use areas that correspond to different caribou habitats. So from calving and post-calving areas through to caribou freshwater crossings, again, taking up a significant portion of the Katicmiet mainland. North of Cambridge Bay on Victoria Island, an additional calving area for the dolphin and union herd has been identified. Passing through the center, through the, really, the bulk of the Northwest Passage in the Katicmiet, are the yellow conditional-use areas for caribou sea ice crossings that come with proposed seasonal restrictions on shipping. It may be a little hard to see on this map. There are also overlaid on top of this those projects with existing rights. You'd see some in particular near the community of Koloktok. There are a number of projects with existing rights that overlap with identified caribou habitat that is recommended to be a limited-use designation in this draft plan. There are also existing rights identified, for example, north of Toloyawak on the Boothia Peninsula, identified not only as a community area of interest, but also as caribou calving areas. Also, south of the community of Kugaruk, there are more existing rights that overlap primarily, again, with caribou habitat. And moving towards Bathurst Inlet and Umingmakhtuk, there are portions of the Hope Bay Greenstone Belt overlapping with some caribou calving areas identified by community members that extend beyond the Hucutac River, a community area of interest in the same location. And there are a few more, relatively small portions of existing rights overlapping with caribou post-calving and caribou freshwater crossings for the Bathurst herd to the west of Bathurst Inlet. Here in the Katicmiet, I also forgot to mention on this map, there are some polar bear denning areas identified. A little bit hard to see some of those, but certainly, north of Cambridge Bay and McLintock Channel, to the east as well, there are a number of polar bear denning areas that have been identified as well. This more detailed table represents a number of different area calculations. We do note that, over the years, there have been increasing requests and interest in calculating percentages of overlap or percentages of different designations contributing to the draft plan. We recognize that these numbers are often more challenging to calculate than one may assume and do vary depending on the geographic projection that's used and how certain overlaps are removed. So for this draft, the Commission, after the draft plan was released... So for this draft, the commission, after the draft plan was released, went and conducted these calculations and issued some questions-and-answer documents outlining the methodology that the commission was relying on. Here again, you can see the overall Nunavut-wide breakdown of 65% being mixed use, a little over 9% being conditional use, 22% being limited use, and another greater than 3% within things like established national parks where the commission does not have jurisdiction. So those overall numbers present one view of the draft plan. However, different participants have different priorities and perspectives, and this table proceeds to break down those numbers into, for example, terrestrial and marine components. You can see how that changes overall. In general, there is a higher percentage of the terrestrial or land-based environment within the limited-use designation. You can see 26% in the whole territory of land compared to 15% of the marine environment. We also have a regional distribution, so for the Ktikmiut, there are breakdowns by overall land and marine area distribution, and then also for terrestrial and marine. I'll draw attention to one number that has generated some significant discussion. For example, in the Ktikmiut terrestrial or land-based areas, the limited-use percentage jumps to 46.5% from, again, 22% over the entire territory. Moving down, we also see a mineral rights distribution. In the Ktikmiut, for example, 28% of existing mineral rights are in limited-use areas. So again, remembering that all of these existing rights would not be subject to prohibitions. So 70% of existing mineral rights in the Ktikmiut are already within mixed-use designations where all uses would conform, and 28% of existing rights are within those limited-use areas where the Appendix A exemptions would apply. The final section, which has also been subject to a great deal of comment and discussion, is Inuit-owned lands. Again, these fall into the categories of surface lands as well as subsurface lands. Again, just picking out numbers for the Ktikmiut, we can see that, overall, Nunavut-wide Inuit-owned lands for surface sit at 31% within a limited-use designation, while in the Ktikmiut, that number increases to 48%. Whereas for subsurface lands, Nunavut-wide, the number stands at 43% of Inuit-owned land subsurface within limited use and 46 or 47% in the Ktikmiut in particular. We noted at the beginning of the presentation that the Nunavut Land Use Plan will apply to Inuit-owned lands, and some of the overlaps are presented here. We do note that some participants have recommended that the Nunavut Land Use Plan not include any plan requirements on Inuit-owned lands, so there have been suggestions to designate all Inuit-owned lands as mixed use, where all uses would conform to the Nunavut Land Use Plan regardless of the values that have been identified. And the commission looks forward to hearing further discussion on this matter in the days I'll make a few final comments. Another area of concern that's been identified with the draft plan is in regards to how geographic boundaries are defined and how confidently they can be determined. I do note that throughout this planning process, the commission has relied upon the best available information to define all of the geographic boundaries included in the draft plan, and there is a relatively small but also significant issue with coastal mapping within the territory. This is the result of different participants providing information to the commission at differing scales of precision. So this really comes to the forefront when looking at Nunavut's extensive and complex coastlines. So one participant may have submitted, let's say, a caribou habitat area that's meant to be terrestrial, and it identifies the boundary on the coast. Another participant may have identified a marine area, could be even a caribou sea ice crossing, that again, could rely on a different scale map to define the boundaries. In the end, if you zoom in really close on our digital maps, which are all available online, you can get strange overlaps along the coast where caribou are calving in the marine environment, or whales are calving on the land, and there are these small adjustments. I just want to note, for those that are interested in these issues, which have long been known and understood by the commission and participants with expertise in geographic information systems, that the commission is currently working to standardize all of the coastlines to the highest resolution version that we have access to. So we would be adjusting the boundaries submitted by participants where they are intended to be coastal and piece by piece matching those up so that we have one consistent version of Nunavut's coastline across the territory. So that is an extensive process that is ongoing and would result in slight modifications to some participants' identified geographic boundaries, but the result would be the removal of these strange coastal overlaps that, again, you can't see on our large-scale maps but become problematic at very fine scales. So in here, there are a few more slides for different regions. I would just jump over those, given that we're here in the Ktikmiut hearing, and at this time, I think we can open for questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Prenamik Jonathan? Yep, Sharon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Sharon Ahalawak, Nunavut Planning Commission Executive Director. At this time, we would, for the registered participants, we are going to ask first the community members if they have any questions on John's presentation or require any clarifications on the materials that were presented in the presentation this morning and this afternoon. And just for other members, then we will go to the registered participants, and if you're not a registered participant and you would like to ask a question, there is a sheet to sign up, to sign your name up to ask a question. Rosie has the signup sheet, so if you want to ask a question after we go through the community members and registered delegates, and again, everyone will be doing their presentations, and there will be opportunities to ask questions on those presentations, but what we would like to do is just, if you have any questions or clarifications on the material that was just presented, John will answer those questions before we proceed into the presentations. So Beth has the microphone. If you're a community delegate sitting around the table, I see Mr. Chair Bobby Greenlee from Cambridge Bay has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sharon. Just going back to page 61, it says a living document that it's going to be reviewed within seven years and then should be done within 10 years. With the way things are going with climate change and board members coming and going, wouldn't you think that's a long time away to review this thing, plan again? I would suggest maybe reviewing five to seven and then completing within 10 years. You know, like, seven years is such a long ways away to review everything again. Just why seven years? How did you come up with seven years? Is my question. Thank you.
Prenamik Sharon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Sharon Ahalawak, Nunavut Planning Commission Executive Director, and thank you for your comments, Bobby. I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan to identify why we picked the timelines and if you can touch on the amendment process as well. John, thank you.
Prenamik Jonathan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Bobby, for the question. So as I noted, this is a new proposal in this draft plan. There were previous comments on how frequently this should be updated. Things ranged from some participants felt five years was more appropriate, some felt it was more realistic perhaps to say every 10 years. Really, this is set out, as all things are, in the Options and Recommendations document, so we can refer there for fulsome details, but really, seven years was picked as a compromise or a balance between doing it every five years and every 10, recognizing that it's been 15 years and counting on the development of this first draft plan, so just that the resources and time needed to conduct the plan, it was thought that seven to 10 was reasonable. Again, the purpose of this draft plan is to collect feedback, so if that's not supported by participants, commissioners will reconsider. And again, as Sharon noted, there are plan amendment processes for more urgent or pressing matters that maybe there is sufficient information on hand four years from now that this should be changed now, and anyone affected by the land use plan can propose an amendment at any time, and the commission itself can also propose amendments at any time if something isn't working. So again, feedback is welcome on all of this, but that's some of the thinking that led to the seven-to-10-year timeframe.
Any other questions from the delegates?
Jim McCackern, municipality of Cambridge Bay, CAO. Jonathan, thanks for the presentation. At the very beginning, you touched on the areas within municipal boundaries. I think you mentioned quarries and tank farms, but you didn't really expand on that. Can you expand on what the impacts are within municipal boundaries?
Prenamik Jonathan?
Yeah, thank you very much, Jim. So there's only certain types of projects that are required to be submitted to the NPC and conform or be supported by our land use plans, and those include things like tank farms, quarries. If there's mineral exploration within a municipal boundary, of which does happen in Nunavut, those activities all need to be supported by the land use plan itself. Most municipal activities, like I mentioned, you know, something like a subdivision or the construction of new buildings, all of that is completely governed by the municipality's land use plan, and the Nunavut Land Use Plan just does not apply to those types of activities. But really, it's other types of activities coming in that need to conform with a few exceptions. It's all set out in legislation which proposals do have to be submitted to the NPC and be reviewed to, again, a conformity determination or a check as to whether it's supported by the plan itself. There are some, in general, this land use plan tries to stay out of the way of communities doing their own planning. We mentioned the example of the North Warning System site here in Cambridge Bay. Those North Warning System sites that are not within municipal boundaries are designated limited use with prohibitions on other activities to prevent them from encroaching on things like radar facilities and landing strips and things like that. Within municipal boundaries, the commission chose to kind of cut those areas out of the municipal boundary and just identify them as valued components, so people coming in would know that it's adjacent to a military facility, but the plan itself does not include any requirements. That approach has generally been taken, but there are exceptions to that in the land use plan. I think of Uvojuk Territorial Park is within municipal boundaries. The commission has jurisdiction because it is not yet fully established, but commissioners chose to designate that as a limited use even though it's within municipal boundaries. So it's kind of a case-by-case basis. Thanks.
Prenamik?
Thank you. Any more questions, please? I cannot see your nameplate. Could you state your name, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A question. Relates to polar bear denning. The information you have given as where it's at. What part of the year? And what part of the island are they in?
Prenamik, before I go to Jonathan, reminder to say your name and where you're from.
Before I go to Jonathan, reminder to say your name and where you're from. Kyanamik. A reminder. Jonathan, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much, Paul, for the question. The polar bear denning areas themselves were identified by, here in the Ktikmiut, we relied on information provided by the government of Nunavut's polar bear biologists, combined with information we collected from Ktikmiut communities ourselves. So it's a little, of course, hard to see on this map. The posters on the back would be an excellent place to view those denning areas, and perhaps I can show you on a break. But generally, north of Cambridge Bay, on the north side of Victoria Island, as well as the eastern coast, of course, Nun, near Koloktok, those are the closest to Cambridge Bay. And then north of Joe Haven and in the areas around both Toloiwak and Kugaruk, identified both by government and communities. In terms of the timing, the plan considers denning season to be from September 15th to April 15th as the time during which if someone wants to conduct earth-moving activities, they would have to have that polar bear monitor go conduct the survey before they did any drilling or blasting. Thank you.
Any more questions, please?
Brandon? Brandon, do you?
Hey, Brandon from Joe Haven Hunters and Trappers. One of my questions was for the limited use on the caribou calving. Can hunters put their input on where they want more limited use or on the caribou calving grounds around Joe Haven?
Kyanamik. Brandon? Jonathan?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Brandon, for the question. I just want to note, so it's again hard to see on the maps, but community representatives in Joe Haven have previously identified additional calving areas around your community, and commissioners have included those in this 2021 draft. So through previous consultations and review of the maps, information that was, again, primarily provided by the government of Nunavut, Joe Haven community representatives were very active in identifying additional areas near the community. That being said, any further changes or modifications to any boundaries in the plan are, of course, welcome. So on review, and again, we can maybe look at some of the larger posters at the back to take a more detailed look. But yes, information from Joe Haven has been directly included in the draft plan, and we encourage additional feedback as needed. Thank you.
Kyanamik.
Thank you. Any more questions? Appears none. There's no more additional questions. Kwanakutirikvotak. Lucy Teypana. Kati玛Yit Hamlet. Hunters and Trappers organizing. Hamlet. I have questions about grizzly bears. It appears there's not enough in this document, although in our region, grizzly bears are becoming numerous. Their territory is expanding.
My question was on grizzly bears and the collared bears because they are now migrating to other areas. Why is not, why are they not included in this? We are getting more and more grizzly bears migrating to other areas like Ulukakdok area north of Victoria Island, around there. So I'd like to know why they are not included in this. Kwana.
Kyanamik. Jonathan?
Thank you.
And thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you again, Lucy, for the question. As I noted, beginning in 2007, the commission has been consulting on what the priority issues are for being addressed in this first-generation Nunavut land use plan. And I gave the example of grizzly bears as something that had not been included in the plan, where polar bear habitat has been included. And that directly reflects the feedback the commission has received over the last 15 years. So we do know that grizzly bear populations are increasing around much of Nunavut, and a lot of discussion has not been held on grizzly bear habitat and the need for the land use plan to manage that habitat. Another good example is musk ox. Similarly, the plan deals with caribou, tuktu extensively, but not musk ox. That is reflective of the priorities of this process to establish this first-generation land use plan. We're sitting here today, hopefully nearing the end of this first-generation process, but that doesn't mean that the land use plan would never address other types of habitats. But this draft plan simply reflects the priority issues that have been identified by all participants in the process. Thank you.
Kyanamik. Just a little reminder for Jonathan. State your name before you speak. Thank you. Any other question? David?
Thank you.
Chair.
Oh. David Tootalik.
David Tootalik.
Time.
Topic. Questions. We have heard.
Kablu Na. Imagmeuta.
And.
Tikipalialimata.
Marine wildlife. Have been seeing new species.
Tamisau.
And we have to look at. What is surviving, and we need to know. Could it be due to climate change? Warming climate? The marine mammals. I've heard at the same time that some of the wildlife has becoming less and less. The new species arriving to the territory. At this meeting here in Cambridge Bay, which is an island, although also my hometown, Joe Haven is an island as well. You have mentioned Oteha Peninsula, which is on the mainland of Canadian terrain. So for further planning, the new species arriving to that territory. So at Talukyok, we are on a migration path of a caribou herds, and for some reason, the migration route has changed and diverted to further areas. And machinery, Hondas, skidoo's are moving easier to travel through the tundra. But as hunters, we have traditional knowledge of where the migration used to take place. And I wanted to know why new species, what is arriving. Thank you, Chair.
Kyanamik. Sharon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sharon Halliwak, Executive Director, Nunavut Planning Commission. David, just for clarification, are you, is your, want to make sure we've got the translations properly, are you asking the commission if we are aware of new species that are coming into your area? Thank you. Beth?
That's the question I have. The future planning, the new species arriving to the territory. And I've noticed a lot of that new arrival is marine mammals. Especially noticeably killer whales, orcas. And they are arriving to the Arctic waters. And it has been noticed over time that they are becoming numerous. Although we know that land mammals, it's very much in evidence that they are arriving. So it's terrestrial and marine that I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sharon Halliwak, Executive Director for the Nunavut Planning Commission. And David, thank you for your comment and your question. So this plan addresses, as John said, the priority, the priority areas that were identified. But as we go forward and we know that climate change, the different species that are coming into the territory, as we have information or communities, organizations, or others provide us with new data sets, there's opportunity to look at that to be included in the land use plan going forward, probably the next version of the plan as it's updated. But one significant area is if it's emergent and we see that the data is there and provided to the commission, and there needs to be a change with management areas or how it's affecting the land. The commission or others can request amendment to the plan, an amendment. So as that information comes forward, we can change the plan. But currently with these new species coming in, that is why they're not addressed, and we didn't have any data currently, and it wasn't identified as a priority area. I hope that answers your question. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Kyanamik. Namatuk.
Good.
Good.
Questions? Thank you. Chinukjuk Hamlet of Talukyok. As the people of this region, we have heard what has been planned and what the future holds for us. We have heard this over the years. For instance, last year, we were made, understood what was coming and has been arriving today in this discussion. And we have heard that other regions will be hosting this magnitude of meetings. We just want to be equally to Kibalik and Bafin Island in terms of how the planning process will be. Thank you, Chair. Or thank you. She, she, it was general comment. It was not a question. I asked four questions, but at this time, I think we'll make, take a short break now and take 15-minute break. Thank you.
Activity can pass through that limited-use area. That said, the shipping would still have to comply with the.
Thank you. Other question? Jonathan? Jonathan Savoy, Nunavut Planning Commission. Thanks very much, Merle. Your understanding is correct.
Thank you. Any other question? I don't see any more hand. We can get back to our agenda here, and I'll turn it over to Sharon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the first time in history, we're ahead of agenda. We had actually allocated the rest of the afternoon to questions. We took to heart very seriously the comments from everyone that had asked the commission to ensure that we allowed sufficient time for question and comments. So with that, if we, wow, I guess we will take five minutes and we're going to set up for community presentations. So although we just had a break, we did anticipate to have more questions, so this is a pleasant surprise. And we'll shift, we'll continue on with our agenda. So if we could just have five minutes, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. She will proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sharon Halawak, Executive Director, Nunavut Planning Commission. So just to clarify where we were at on our agenda, I guess there was a little bit of confusion about our presentation and the questions that, and answer period. So we're just going to refocus so everybody understands where we're at. And I would ask Jonathan just to walk through the part of the agenda for the presentation and the questions submitted. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sharon, Jonathan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is Jonathan Savoy from Nunavut Planning Commission. I just want to confirm that under the agenda, we had separate, excuse me, agenda items for presentations on the draft plan and commission responses to pre-submitted questions. I just want to confirm that the commission has previously received multiple rounds of written questions and has issued three separate written responses to questions that were previously received. I chose in the overview presentation to incorporate some of those questions that we felt were most relevant to the discussions here today. For example, the additional context on the selection of existing rights. We did not receive additional question, pre-submitted questions to respond to during the hearing. So from our perspective, we have responded in writing as requested to the questions that have been submitted, chosen to highlight some of those responses during our presentation, and we did not intend to review our three separate questions and answer documents that have been released over the last year. We understand there may have been a little bit of confusion as to the process for responding to these questions. And I think today, we just want to clarify that the questions that have been received have been responded to in writing. And additionally, we've responded to likely hundreds of questions with each individual participant through our participant information sessions that were done orally. And right now, we're really opening the floor to further oral questions or if part of the responses were not clear in the written record, to provide an opportunity for any follow-ups or highlights of particular issues that were not covered. So apologies for any confusion about the timing and purpose of this question period. But I think at this time, we can maybe just reoffer if there are any further questions. We can get into it this time or alternatively, we can pivot to the first presenter, which is the municipality of Cambridge Bay and the Ikalututjik hunters and trappers. Thanks.
Any question from the registered participants regarding Jonathan's presentation or what he just said? So I don't see any hands. We can just continue with our agenda and move on to Cambridge Bay. Just a reminder, state your name and where you're, who you represent, Greenamie, and
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a 11-minute video of what our hunters and trappers, sorry, Bobby Greenlee, Cambridge Bay HCO Chair. This is 11-minute video. That's gonna, some of it's gonna be part of our submission in the future here. So based on a lot of the stuff that was brought up today and some other issues, so this is just, we created Victoria Island's Waterway Safety Committee. And that's through the Ocean Protection Plan Project that we've been doing. So we'll just show this video and then after that, I can mention on some of the stuff that we want to point out or areas that we're going to point out in our submission. So we have this 11-minute video. Thank you.
James Panuiyak. Ikalututjikami nunakaktutukalaktunga lutakabluunga thamunga hemayunga. Aypakutuaga ngat takunna kivalliayo amigaypalliajinna koti umidzat thamunga katakti. Munaki yuyugut thahmani nunaptinni. Kawaymayaakaktugut hapkuwa umidzat tikikataktut pittiyakaktut uwaptingni. Nunaptinniglu angutikhaniglu abatingni. Ungaytuminga tutut thahamaniilaktugut. Kangangoktok hapkuwa tuktuit amigaypakkalamata amihuakiuit. Kilmuvallialakpaktut thamunga kivataanut hapuma kilyaktav. Kiilinangmi hikuttiyaktukotit tariormit. Hiku nagyagnayraga ngat tuktuit ikalekpatut thabunga akianut ahyaamut. Tarwani 2015 mi una angoniaktuyu ikahemayo akianut ahyaamut. Malikugi tuktuit ikahemayut. Akaywaningomad una umia hikulekut. Tarwana peakhoni tuktuit angoniaktuyublu ikahveyagut hikumi ingilgahemayo. Una umia tikinnarekad ata wameglunid ubluanik. Una angoniaktuyu ayochetkaya toktawani ahyaami hikuttiluni kayagnaytumit algawyami. Hapkuwa unipkariauyut ikkawadutigiyabut hapkuwa havariayavalliauyut pimmagiyuyut. Iumagiyakakaptikku hapkuwa angoniaktivut angutikabudlu kayakityakakaptikku. Kihenittaw hikulekuyuinaongittut iumaluutigiyabut. Iumaluutkanguyugut ohkoyuanik kuviokagaga ngat. Aheniglu halumalonik kuviogaktawaga ngata. Hapkuwa okomadkutawakatakamata imak umiaami uhiblugu. Umitzet tau nanga kablu na tarionganit uhiblutyuk kuviokakatakmatyuk thamunga tarioktingnut. Hamna imak kuviogaktawakaktok ilariyukiunamad ahinakmiutanik umayunik. Halagiyayumnamata hamani tarioptinni umayunik. Umiallu malingit kakuiikamit ihuyautiunaptut nunan hinanik kakuaaluk. Tanwalu ihuyautauni amata angutikhanit unaguekertunik kuvaluni tuktunik hinakaptunik. Iumaluutigimiyabut hamna tariok ilowani natkanilu kuengikutikiblugit hapkuwa angiyut umidzat thamunga kataktut. Tanwalu ihuyautiniamatyuk hapkuwa angutikkat nariniaktut naalaktut. Tanwalu tuakitigiyakaktut abatingnut. Ubagut ukautigikatariakaktut hapkuwa iumaluutivut unakenahuaklugit hapkuwa nunautivut. Hamnalu inuwekut. Taimatutwalua ukuwa Ikalututjikami angoniakti nanariaktoktit katimayit ikayoktigiyalauaktut. Ubagut ikayowapaktabut hapkuwa angoniaktivut nakisahkeoktut nunakatiminnik nakishainik. Huli munaki himma koutyuk hapkuwa nunautivut angoniakiblugit. Una huahemayutukaulaktok John Maksarek okalakhemayo imatut. Ubagut una heiyuyugut nunaptinnik imautiptingiglu. Hamna nunautikput nakisahkeogigigaptitku. Taimatilukuwa EHTO'kut havakataulaktut tanwani kiilinangmi tariongani kayagnaykutikainik katimayagalani. Ukuwa katimayagalad pekatigitut nunalinni timiyuyuni. Ilangi kanganaluk thahamaniiktutukauyut 1979 ukiyut adoktilugit. Ilanittaw lutangablutik ikayotyuyut havariauyunik thahamani nunalinni. Havakatikiblugit hilatani ngatu ikayotigiyabut hapkuwa ingilgayuleriyit kana dami ukuhalu kana dami hikulekayiyit. Tanwalu tariormutanik havakaktut ukiyoktaktumi. Ukautakaktugut havariauyukhanik tariomi umitzet agyaktaktilugit. Ubwalu kayagnaykutikainik tamainik iumaluutauyunik. Katimayikuta ngalakpaktugut ihumagiyayuyunik. Tarwani katimakatigikuta angiyunik iumaluutauyunik ukautakaktugut. Tuhaftitakatakota inokatigiyaptinnik humelaka ukiyoktaktumiutanik. Tanwalu ngalakpakugit iumaluutigiyainik. Tuhaftitayakatakota umidzanik hilataniitunik tikikataktunik nunaptinnut. Ikayutaulekpeaktut havaryumayaptinnik. Hamna havariaut piunakhavaktok hatya. Hamna hila allamoqalayatilugu ngarona peakatalamat. Hapkuwa angoniaktivut kawaymayaakamata kayaktukayungumit anogaykivikaminnik naonaytunik. Hapkualu initokli utokkarnik pitakaktut. Munariaoyakamata pittayiyalutik umiaktoktunik hinakheayunit. Hapkuwa katimayagalad ikayotigilugit. Vanaykatiginyaktabut ihwakaykatigilugit nunavyanik hapkuwa nunautivut naonayaklugit. Hapkuwa angoniaktut upautakatariangita ayochalayukumit. Tanwalu hapkuwa hilatani ngatu umidzat kawayamamata thamunga upautakatariakanitut inuit initokliinut. Ihwakayunaktugut ilihautikainik hapkuwa angoniaktivut atuakainik. Tammalaykutini karitauyagalaaniglu takusakamata nganilakmanata kayaktoktilugit kayakinahuaklugit. Uitayagnaktumilakkata upalunaktilugu hapkuwa nunakatait kinakheayuyulu. Hiuliyutiniamata kenariakakkata. Kawaymayaakamata kanok ikayoktayliorekka ta upalunga hemalutik. Ihwakayunamayugut hapkuninga ilihautikainik ukuwa katimayagalad. Ukuwa katimayagalad piuyut uktokvikat ilihautikainik hapkuwa inolgamit naalatya lutik tau tuklutiglu. Iliyatya nyamata unipkariawaktunik. Tanwalu ilikoyaktoktawyunik kawaywarlekutikiblugit. Tanwalu ilihautigilugit hapkuwa tareu natkanitunik karitauyagalaanik. Tanwalu hapkuninga inokangittunik timiyunaktunik kunnyalakutini.
Hearing from the committee and community members about their lived experiences and how their community is being affected is critical to the success of this work and our understanding of how vessel traffic is impacting the northern shores of Canada and its communities. The discussions at the Victoria Island Waterway Safety Committee table are driven by community concerns. The two things we hear most often are the need for better communication between all parties and the need for collaborative decision-making at all stages. Through the support of the Federal Ocean's Protection Plan, we have been able to work together with indigenous and coastal communities like Cambridge Bay. To bring together knowledge from coast to coast to coast, to include various types of data when looking at shipping impacts, and to develop relationships that make us better equipped to ensure our oceans are cleaner, healthier, and safer for years to come, from the community level throughout the oceans that connect us all.
We have come a long way. We have learned a lot together through the Ocean's Protection Plan. And I am hopeful that we will continue to see improvements for future generations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's just some of the stuff that we wanted to show you. But it adds up to a lot of things for our submission, like we have a unique caribou herd compared to everybody else. Ours migrate from the island to the mainland and then back. You know, on some of the presentation, it showed for the calving ground. Sure, at one time, it might have been the main area for calving ground. It's not just a specific area on the island. It's the whole north end of the island that is calving ground. They just don't go to one area how it is now. We have them crossing on the west side, east side to go to their calving grounds, which is the whole north end of our Victoria Island. So, you know, that's stuff that we're going to be submitting and making clear that it's just not one specific area for calving ground. We have five river systems that we do commercial fishing plus local fishermen, just community members to go out. There's five main ones and then we have a sixth one that's right close to the community. You know, we want to protect those river systems and waterways and the areas around it. So all this stuff is going to be added into there. So, all this stuff is going to be added into there. We have musk ox, they don't migrate, but they're, you know, they're on the island. We have a lot more polar bears coming around now. Grizzly bears is another thing. So, you know, they're new to us on the island, but that's something that we're learning about as well. So, we don't know about their denning areas. We deal with a lot of wildlife that are classed as species of concern or endangered. We just did a study with a university out of Texas for the sandpipers, which are listed as endangered that migrate through here. You know, and their land is getting smaller and smaller. So, down in Texas, and if we start having certain stuff coming up here, you know, we've got to look at stuff like that. It's sure, it's not an animal that we harvest, but it's an animal that we should be looking after because it's getting endangered as well. So, all this kind of stuff will be submitting in the future here. So, but I just wanted to show you the video. We do shoreline erosion, you know, that was brought up earlier. All the mammals. We're doing underwater noise pollution studies as well, you know. So, I just wanted to bring those stuff out. And then when we do our submission, this will all be, we'll have maps and everything showing the locations. We did circle some when we've met in the past, you know. So, but yeah, that's all I can say right now. It's just, you know. Yeah, also, we have, they're not commercial fishing anymore, but it's where our families come from. It's in the Bird Sanctuary, Ellis River, Perry River, Perry Island. A lot of our families come from those areas. And stuff like that should also be protected as well, you know. And like I said, this will all be in the maps when we do our submission. But I just wanted to point out those locations. Those are, we have an area on Wellington Bay there. Sharon and Darryl probably remember about it when they discovered Dill Campsite there. You know, stuff like that is all got to be brought forward and brought to your guys' attention as well. So, you know, we'll have all that information for you before the deadline. I just want to say thank you to everybody for giving us the opportunity to speak and show this video. If there's no questions for me, I'll hand it to Bev and Jim. There's some information from Harry McSagick. He had to leave today, so he asked if we can have this information brought up or his concerns. Thank you.
Inamee?
Thank you.
Before we go to the floor for questions, you guys can finish your presentation first, then we can get questions from the floor after. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Beverly McSagick, I'm the manager for the Ikalututjiaq Henderson Trappers Organization. But I'm also sitting with Jim McHeckering, who is the SAO for the Hamlet. Harry had to leave today, he had to leave early. He's on a plane going on a medical trip. But he wrote down his concerns and what he wanted the MPC and the public to hear. So, the evolution of time and circumstances has given us Inuit a deeper understanding and appreciation of the IQ principles, of which I will read at the end of my brief. In the time of my late parents and late grandparents, we did not exist in a reactive attitude, but in a proactive attitude. We recognize that if we do not care for and protect the land, animals, and environment, there would be a great price to pay in our harvesting and nomadic travels with each seasonal change of subsistence. As the Western culture and the establishment of the government at various levels move on, Inuit have adapted to the familiarities and the written documents on how we should be looking at ourselves. As Inuit, we had a vocal way of exchanging information, such as terrain, ice conditions, animal spotted, change of migratory patterns, and how the atmosphere or weather affected our harvesting capabilities. Today, as our communities are growing and expanding, there is a concern and serious issue around land use. Our harvesting rights as industrial endeavors are becoming more active. There are several entities that make up the community, and these include Transport Canada, the distant early warning facilities, minerals and oil, and gas interests. And our local government, the Hamlet of Cambridge Bay. Each entity has identified their purpose and the required land for their facility and movements. A spirit of consideration and cooperation is explained very eloquently. Is that how you say it? Okay. In these eight items, I wish to read from the IQ principles. And that's coming from Harry McSagick.
I'll let you read the IQ principles.
Yeah. Jim McHeckering, Municipality of Cambridge Bay. So, from Harry McSagick, the IQ principles. Respecting the others and caring for people. Fostering good spirit by being open, welcoming, and inclusive. Decision-making through consensus. Serving and providing for others. Development of skills through practice and action. Working together for a common cause. Being innovative and resourceful. And respecting care for the land, animals, and the environment. Thank you.
Inamee? Taima?
Is that your presentation?
Go ahead, Bobby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bobby Greenlee, Ikalututjiaq Chair. Just to add also to our presentation from the video. With that, we also have a notice to mariners in place for around here for shipping also. And so far, it's working really good. We get a lot of communication, so it's from the ships and the companies going through, coming in and going. So, I just wanted to add that we do have a notice to mariners in place for shipping around here as well. Thank you.
Yep. Inamee? Taima Wuliman?
Thank you. That's your presentation. Is there any question to the presenters?
Any questions from the staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sharon Ahalawak, Executive Director for the Nunavut Planning Commission. For the record, before I ask the questions, Bobby and Beverly and Jim, thank you for your presentation. I want to also confirm that you are further providing a written submission that will be included in the record, correct? The nods are confirming yes. Bobby?
Yes, we are. Bobby Greenlee, HTO Chair, Cambridge Bay HTO Chair. Yes, we are going to be submitting a written submission, two of them. One from Hamlet and one from our Henderson Trappers Organization. And that'll be submitted before the deadline here, that new deadline given this morning, or this afternoon, sorry.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Commission staff, John Savoy. Are there any questions to the presentation? Mr. Chair, may I turn it over to Jonathan Savoy, please?
Thank you, Chair, Jonathan. Thank you very much for your presentation. Sorry, this is Jonathan Savoy with the Nunavut Planning Commission. Bobby, you had mentioned the calving areas on the north of Victoria Island and indicated that that is part of the historic calving range. And you'd be providing some updated mapping in a future submission. We noted in our presentation earlier that the current draft plan proposes limited use designations for caribou calving habitat with year-round prohibitions on activities, certain industrial activities. Do you have any comments on the appropriateness of year-round area-based protections? Or would some of the other alternatives provided by participants be appropriate as well? Thank you.
Inamee? Jonathan? Bobby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jonathan. Bobby, Ikalututjiaq HTO Chair. It's so hard to answer that kind of stuff with the different wildlife that we deal with and the lands. For the caribou, they leave here, you know, October, November, and they come back in April. That's just for our herd on the, that come to the island. So, you know, you're looking, April to, I would say, mid, late November now, the way the ice is freezing over now for them to migrate. You know, they migrate from the south in the spring to the island, starting April. And then I would say they would leave around November, mid to late November now, the way the freeze-up's going. So, that time of the year, season, I would say, you know, very limited to nothing, in my opinion. Just because of the herd's status and the shape they're in. And they do change their migration route, you know. So, right now, a lot of them are going to the west, but they still cross on the east side where the original calving ground that's posted on your presentation. But now they're on both sides, and more of them are on the northwestern side of the island. So, from April to November, it's a very tough time for mining and whatnot. I would say minerals or whatever. That would be the best time to have really little to nothing happening. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Inamee? Before I go back to Jonathan, I just want to you to know that if you cannot answer at the moment, you can also answer by written. That goes to everybody. I just wanted to put that out there. There may be times that you may not be able to answer right away, but you can answer them by written. And it can be submitted. Thank you. Any other question? No? Namato? Oh, Jonathan?
Jonathan Savoy, Nunavut Planning Commission. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Bobby, for your previous response. Just one other question on caribou. We talked about the boundaries on caribou freshwater crossings and there being some debate about an appropriate buffer around a caribou freshwater crossing. Does the Ikalututjiaq HTO have any advice on an appropriate buffer or distance around caribou freshwater crossings? And sorry, I'll just further clarify that the current draft plan includes a 10-kilometer buffer. And some participants have suggested that that is too large and could be reduced to five kilometers, for example.
Inamee? Bobby? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jonathan. Bobby Greenlee, HTO Chair. More is always better for the buffer, especially for caribou. It's a really hot topic right now everywhere, not only here, but pretty much everywhere in Nunavut, even NWT. 10, sure, I wouldn't want to reduce it. But, you know, that's something we can have in our presentation when I discuss with my board in our submission. I mean, so, like, our board is very, works very well together, and we have a wide group of people that been out and, you know, they've been here for a while. So, you know, it's something that we'll have on our submission. I don't want to give a definite answer, but, you know, it's something that everybody's got to work and meet on. You know, if everybody wants five and 10, maybe meet in the middle. You know, just a suggestion. But, yeah, right now, I can't really answer that. Thank you.
Inamee? Go ahead, Jonathan?
Jonathan Savoy, Nunavut Planning Commission. Thank you again, Mr. Chair, and again, Bobby, for your thoughtful response. One last question I was interested in asking is, some participants have recommended different approaches for land use plan requirements depending on the land ownership. For example, removing plan requirements on Inuit-owned lands in particular. And we're also wondering if the Ikalututjiaq Hunters and Trappers or the Municipality of Cambridge Bay have any thoughts on the appropriateness of tailoring plan requirements to Inuit-owned lands differently than that would apply on Crown land? Thank you.
Inamee? Jonathan? Bobby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jonathan. That I cannot answer right now. That's, you know, yeah, I would, I'm just going to defer that to, Bev's got it marked down here, and I'll discuss that with the board. And, you know, just, that's something I can't answer right now. Yeah, sir, I'll hand the mic over to Jim. But, yeah, for myself, I can't answer that.
Go ahead.
Jim McHeckering, Municipality of Cambridge Bay. I think just to add to Bobby's comment, I think that would be a discussion for the HTO, for the municipality, and for the KIA to have together. To find out, to get a better sense of why they would want those lands removed from the plan. At this point, I think it would At this point, I think it's premature to say whether that would be appropriate or not. But I think that's a great conversation for us to have jointly.
Kynamik? Thank you. Anything else? Or that's good? I don't think there's any from the staff, so, community participant, if there's any question to their presentation? Okay, I don't see any hands. Registered participant? If there's any question to Hamlet and Cambridge Bay HTO's presentation? I don't see any hands, so, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and it's something that our board will definitely think about. Kynamik? Namatuk? Patalutauli? Kynamik?
Thank you. For our discussions today, it appears that we are on the right track for the agenda. In fact, we're a little early. Tomorrow morning, we will resume at 9:00 a.m.
Hamlet of Joe Haven.
And the presenters will be Hamlet of Joe Haven tomorrow morning. Pursued on the agenda, 9:00 tomorrow morning. Please have a good day.